It's fine?
It's 5:59.
It's fine.
All right, fine.
That might...[5.35][5.35](laughing)
Bruce? Good evening. The February 5th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting is in session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Patty Crowen.
Here.
Okay. Any agenda changes or revisions, Director Zamel?
No.
No? All right. We have the minutes from our last meeting of January 15th, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes for the February, or January 15th meeting as written.
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no final orders, resolution, or written communications, no public hearings or deliberations. Do we have any old business? Seeing none, all right. Under new business, we are going to talk about our commission goals and projects. And before we go into that topic, I have one small thing to talk about. So I'm gonna pass these around so that you have an idea what I'm talking about here. You know, and I won't make a speech every night, but (laugh) we're, we on the Planning Commission come together from a whole variety of life experiences and professions, and I think that's a real positive attribute of this group. We get packets, we study the packets, we listen to the public when they take time out of their schedules to provide testimony, we deliberate on that, and we do our best, I think, to arrive at recommendations to forward to the City Council for their consideration. Recently, I've been a little bit disappointed that sometimes the options that we provide to the City Council are not clearly articulated in the information the council receives. At the last meeting, it was suggested that there was a time constraint in preparing the packet for the City Council. I don't know, maybe our recommendations sometimes run counter to what our planning staff wants. But I would appreciate it in the future if our recommendations are included clearly as options for the council to consider. So I don't want to just complain without a solution. So the solution is to go back to a process that some of you that have been here longer than I have may actually remember, and that was providing a form to the City Council that clearly articulates the actions or the recommendations taken by the Planning Commission. And so I provided you with a sample. It was actually when Bruce Robinson was the Planning Commission Chair. It essentially identifies the matter under consideration, what the nature of the item was, and then the final recommendation, and then it's approved, signed, and sent over to the City Council to be a part of their packet. So Kate, do I need a motion to start doing this again, or?
I don't think so. If you have general consensus from the group.
Okay. So does anyone have any comments or concerns about this approach?
Makes sense to me, yeah.
I like the idea because I've noticed, too, in the council meetings, that information that we have put forth has not been there.
Okay.
I think we need some kind of a tool. This is a good tool.
Doug, thoughts?
Nope, I'm good.
Nope, you're good, okay. Anyone else? Comments, concerns? All right. Make it so, Kate. Thank you. All right, so the new business that we have, as this being the first of our full meetings on, in this year, is to talk about our goals and projects. And Lindsey, I appreciate you sending over what you did, so do you want to step through it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So for the meeting materials for this evening, you were provided a pretty large list of ongoing and continued projects, as well as some amendments that have been identified through either the City Manager or City Council. I do want to be able to hear from the commission on your own areas in the code where you see that there might be an opportunity for improvement, as well as talk about some of these projects that will be continuing throughout the year. I did get a chance to meet with the Chair yesterday afternoon in advance of the meeting this evening, and some items that came out of that was the Planning Commission having the ability to do more work-study meetings and work-study items before you're put on the stand to make a decision, and maybe even before public hearings occur, so that you can better understand the breadth of the impacts, as well as the breadth of the improvements or adjustments that can be done. And I'm more than happy to be able to dedicate some work-study time for these topics. Another aspect I heard was maybe expanding the citizen engagement beyond meeting the regulatory requirements of the state, and having some more open dialogue conversations with the citizens before the public hearing, so that we can truly understand and grapple through some of their concerns as well. And then we also talked a little bit about the, some landscaping opportunities and addressing trees, and how to better preserve landscaping and trees within, with our existing, as new development occurs, how we can preserve those trees that are on-site in a better manner. I also received the email from Commissioner Griffiths in regards to his comments on landscaping, and I'm willing to hear a little more about that tonight as well. I came with a pen and a notebook, so I can write down some ideas. I do want to emphasize to the commission, as it was presented, and I'm not sure if any of you got an opportunity to watch the work-study last night with City Council, but the comprehensive plan is going to be a big task for us this year, and ideally, I would like to be able to move forward with adoption of the comprehensive plan and municipal code amendments at the same council meeting. This allows the implementation of the comp plan to really start off immediately and not get, it doesn't be, the comprehensive plan doesn't become a plan on a shelf that deters or attracts test. As well as the Nelskopf Plan, which I think will be a large undertaking as well for the commission, as we look at development regulations to implement that. I kind of see the Nelskopf Plan falling into an element of the comprehensive plan, and maybe we are able to create, you know, we've got other pearls that have not had the in-depth planning that some of them have, and so we have the opportunity to leave some spaces in the comprehensive plan as those other pearl plans specific to those areas can come in. A term you might hear would be sub-area planning. It's a term that I've used, and I'm happy, if you hear me change terms in some manners, please ask. We don't have UGBs in Washington, we have UGA's. It's a learning process. The other aspect that'll be in front of you within the next six months likely will be the tsunami overlays own, and I have a call in with DCLD in regards to that, so we can wrap up that grant and try to get going on the writing of those regulations. So I did want to give you an idea of what was coming forward, and then as we look at code amendments and reorganizing the code and cleaning it up, I want to hear on some housekeeping proposals and determine whether some of your guys' ideas are a full-term project or something that we can integrate into some housekeeping items. So with that, I'd like to be able to give it back to you, Chair, and answer any questions and just kind of have a nice dialogue with the commission.
Yes, great. And thank you for putting this together. This is really a nice jumping-off point for discussion. Steve, do you want to start the ball here, since you've provided an email to Lindsey?
Yeah, I didn't have a lot of detail in my email, but I think a question that has arisen for me in terms of my participation on the commission in the last year or so is the tree ordinance, and, you know, I started to read that again today, and one I went this way and one I went that way, and pretty soon I was lost in the woods.[652.12][652.12](laughing) I think the ordinance could use an overhaul, and I think perhaps we should sit down and have a work-study session about what do we want to achieve with the ordinance. And my concern is that with increased development in the city, we're losing a lot of our natural beauty. And one of the issues that came out in the Imagine Lincoln City process is people really like Lincoln City, and they come here and visit it because it's a beautiful natural setting. And so maintaining the beauty of our community, our trees and our landscaping, is our bread and butter. It really is for our economy. And I think what I would like, you know, we have requirements that developers hire an arborist to check out the trees on undeveloped lots. What I would like to know, maybe we could do some research to find out, what has that resulted in, actually? How many trees have been preserved? Or, you know, what can we do that, or what incentives might we provide to a developer to maintain, keep trees on their property? Or if they cut Sitka spruce down or western hemlock down, can they replant the same species so it looks like the Oregon coats, not someplace else? And, yeah, those are, I would, I think that's, it would be worth a review of the pre-ordinance to see, what are our goals? What do we want to achieve with the ordinance, and how can we rewrite it to make it easier for all of us to understand?
Great. Does anyone want to follow up on that? You know, I'll just tee off on one of the, one of the items that Steve mentioned, and that's the visioning process. We did spend considerable time and money doing that process, and I am, I think it would be worth our while to review at least the raw data from it, so that we can always kind of have that in the back of our minds of what we're doing forward, that complements what we heard during the visioning process and things that were in there that perhaps we can implement and not wait for 20 years to do, so. Gary?
Totally different shift in direction on this. We've talked a lot about affordable housing and workforce housing in Lincoln City, and the fact that a huge amount of the population that works here can't afford to live here. And we have, I think, a unique opportunity with the Cascade property that, at this point in time, and along with the comprehensive plan, because I think that they play with each other a lot, we could use that large chunk of property to somehow create an environment where a developer could, in fact, build housing that the workforce that works here can afford to live here. We talked a lot about it, and we even put a different word in, because we only used to have affordable housing, and now we have affordable housing and workforce housing because we realized affordable really wasn't affordable for the workforce. And, and I, you know, I really think this Planning Commission kind of has an obligation to make it possible for the workforce that works here to live here. And not just lip service, but, you know, do something that maybe goes against the grain that we've always had, you know, because I, I'll admit, I'm one of those people that "Not in My Backyard" applies to, you know? Build it somewhere else, you know, those kind of mentalities. But I've met a lot of the people that work here in town, and they live in Otis or beyond, Grand Rondi, even further, and when the economy gets better, and it's, it really is getting better, competing for those workers is going to be something where we lose. And if we lose the workforce in this town that caters to the tourists, that cleans the rooms, that works at the restaurants, that works at the casino, we'll have a real problem. And, and, you know, it's one of those that we could avoid going into it, but it's one of those that if we ignore it because we don't want it in our backyard, we could end up with a diminishing economy, not because of not having a pretty town, but because they can't afford to live here. And, you know, I don't want to see us kill our economic engine because, you know, we want to keep our prices high.
Do we have a timeframe on the development of that, of that plan up there? Do we know what this?
The master plan?
I mean, I know that the master plan has been under development for some time now. Do we know when we might see that again?
Well, it will be, the draft master plan will be presented to City Council at their meeting on February 11th by Mr. Townsend. And what that means, assuming that City Council likes the draft plan, then it would move forward to the Planning Commission for your public process and approval at that time. Now, as far as the implementation of that and the development starting to occur, I'm not sure how long it'll take for those private entities that'll buy into it to come in and start doing site plan amendments and establishing that type of stuff. But if we can get the master plan out, then we at least have the tools for, for those interested to utilize.
The city owns some of the property up there.
Correct.
Right. So if we could somehow get creative and jump-start the development up there by focusing on the land the city already owns, maybe that is a way to push it forward.
It is my understanding that there are agreements in place with Economic Development Department for some of those lands, for development of that, and so I believe they're just waiting for the master plan process to complete.
Do we know when we'll learn more about the city properties that the city put out to bid last year for workforce housing and affordable housing?
I believe that once, I don't know, I can follow up with Allison in Economic Development about that. I know that it is buttoned up at this point in time because of those agreements, but until, until something becomes definitive, I believe that it'll stay in its secret envelope.
I have a question. This is my first time going through the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if transportation is involved in it. But transportation has got to be considered important here to workforce housing and getting people to and from places, because right now, what's available doesn't meet the needs, not just for people who are in the workforce, but for seniors and others in town, too. So as I said, I'm not sure, I was going to ask Kate for, if I can get a copy of the former comprehensive plan or something, so I can see what we're working with.
Right, and so those are all on the website, and I can send you all links to them.
Okay, thank you. And Kate, when you send those links, will you also provide them with the state's expectations of a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And is there an outline for the new plan? Available?
I do not believe so yet. So that is something that I'll be working on in the very near future.
Okay.
I got something to add to Cunningham's concern about the workforce housing. We do have some near 400 acres of land that we own. Not all of it's easily buildable, but if we did some sort of land trust program with a developer where somehow we get some sort of small rent for the land, that would take 50% of the cost out of the equation.
Mm-hmm. And I think that might be the route that, that...
A tiny house developer, do a little village.
Yeah.
Here, do one over there.
And I don't know what type of developments, but I'd have to look at the RFPs out of the Economic Development Department to see what proposals were put out there, or requests for proposals, and kind of what the parameters were on those.
I think this is the time to talk this, because I, you know, if we don't get our hands dirty up front, and then everything gets done the way it's always been done, then the developers that get the property will develop really nice, not affordable houses on the properties, and it'll be gone, and the property, the 400 acres will, or else, you know, what we'll be left with are the tops of mountains that nobody can build on, you know? We have a unique opportunity that I think if we cross the boundary and do things as we've always done, we'll end up with a lot of nice quarter-million-dollar houses that workforce people can't have.
Yeah. And I will be working closely with Allison on establishing the development agreements that go in with those transfers of land for those developments, and so that is where we can really put in our teeth into what we require for that development. But it is the city's intent and impassion to assure that we are creating affordable and workforce housing. And as you know, the parking reduction, the four flats, the ordinances that you guys processed late last year were the first start to moving the ball forward on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm worried about the economic level of working-class people, because the motel people are traditionally, the hospitality industry is predominantly low-paid jobs, and it's only lasts for four months of, out of the year that it is really a healthy community. I think that Ed Dreistad is doing a good job, and I think that, that it is important for us to take a long-term view, 20, 30 years out into the future, and that Foothill Boulevard, which stretches from the, by the high school now, and could produce a roadway all the way to the golf course at the north end of town by connecting to Devil's Lake, East Devil's Lake Road, would be immensely important for the school district, for everyone, so that there are two roads in town. When the traffic is in August, it can be closed down, 101 can be closed for a couple of hours with a traffic accident, and it's a dead stop, basically, going either direction in August. And I'd like to see a secondary road go through there so that we can develop 23rd Street with light industrial. There is, I think, an important need, because as, as nice as California has been, it's got too many people there, and you can see it by the forest fires there. People don't like to live in a community. They would prefer Oregon, and the I-5 corridor will be, continue to expand, and it has already. And we, as a community, should provide jobs that are light manufacturing, and there can be jobs that do that. Blozen, a jet ski fabricator of high-tech stuff for jet skis, is in Tualatin. They're not out of River. The fellow who started Blozen, John Dady, was a kid who learned to jet ski on Devil's Lake. Now, I'm not saying that Blozen would answer our quest, our need for that, but there are plenty of people, water skiing equipment, nautical stuff, and there can be, can be businesses like that that are good for year-round employment. And I think it's important to provide that so that people can raise their families and future generations can have a place to go if they're not interested in the hospitality industry, and...
One of the, one of the things that you just brought up, which we, it's kind of one of those dangling threads from last year, Deb Nicholson did apply for grant funding for a bypass road. We did not receive that grant funding, but she was going to get a debrief from the agency involved, so that we could know how best to reapply what, where we fell short. So if you could follow up on that, that would be really helpful for us.
Yeah, we kind of need a bridge right down at the southern end of the Foothills Boulevard, because it's kind of a steep gully, and that's what we need that grant for. But I think we could start the other way, maybe.
Yeah.
There's a lot of progress, and I think you, as the Planning Director, should take advantage of all of our different experiences in, in life, and what we're doing now, so that you could have a project. I think Steve is urban forestry. Patty has got expertise in...
Rocks and dirt.[1622.15][1622.15](laughing) Rocks and dirt.
I've got experience in business, as Marie does. We all know certain people, and it's inter, it's interneting with people. I don't believe Allison Robertson, as much as she wants to, can handle all of the business connections that we could get if there was some interest on our part. And while I think Richard did a good job on policies and ordinances, keeping them up to date and such, we weren't taken advantage of to, for our expertise. We were rubber stamps, and the things were good, with some exceptions, perhaps.
Well, there's a, there's a new sheriff in town.
Right. I will, I will take more than advantage of you guys with your willingness. I think that through my professional experience, Planning Commissions are generally the biggest cheerleaders for the city, and can share the information with your neighbors, with your professional peers, and other people that are dealing with the same issues to get the word out. And so I really appreciate that comment, Miles, and I'm making note of it right now.
Great.
Good.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the work-study, study idea. I think a lot of ideas have come out from our conversation here tonight, and I think it would be useful to have a work-study session or two before, perhaps, we start work on the comprehensive plan, so we can see, what are the issues we want to make sure we address in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Affordable housing, workforce housing, walkability, you know, tree protection, you know, what are, you know, what are the issues that we really want to focus on?
Good point. Yeah, and I'm happy to schedule those. I want to hear that as well.
Great. Doug, any goals, things that you'd like to see us work toward this year?
Well, just the one that I proposed probably four years back, and every year since, is kind of a color-coordinated look to the main business section on town, so it doesn't look all chopped up. And if we could get something in that in the process, I think that would be great. And you could follow over with that with, I just have a real hard time with the different types of street lighting we have going through the main part of town. I think it's antiquated, outdated, and disorganized.
And Doug, are you referring to the light fixtures or the lighting itself? Would you like to see LED or how?
It just needs to be consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that feeds into the, the ongoing commercial design standards effort that's going on right now. I know that we, as a group, talked about signs and thought that perhaps the sign discussion should be appropriately in, folded into the commercial design standards effort, so.
Yeah.
That went to the city council. What did they say about that?
They said they want to come back. The public hearing is still open, and they'll be closing it and deliberating on, I believe the meeting is February 25th. I do want to go back to a comment Doug made just for some clarity. When you're talking about lighting fixtures, are you referring to the city's lights or public, or, or private development? Or both?
It, it's hard to tell. I mean, I know that on the poles, when we have overhanging lights attached to the poles, that we pay PGE for that electric bill. The stand-up poles that are on the, on the sidewalks and whatnot, I think we own that property and we pay the city for that. And then there's the, there's a third type out there too that I'm just not coming to the top of my head right now.
There's two that are similar, and then there's the ones that come off the pole direct. But the two that are similar are not similar enough to be consistent.
I think one's in Ocean Lake and the other down in Taft with the distinctive.
I don't even think it's that far apart. I think it's, I think it might be D. Lake and, and Ocean Lake.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'll go do a, a field survey.
And just on top of that too, if you want to drive through town at night, just start counting the lights that aren't working.
Yes.
And I know-
My night vision's getting worse as I age, but-
I know you can call into PGE and say, hey, look, you got a, you got a light out, and they take care of it. And that's probably good, and a lot of people probably do that. The other ones that are out that the city owns, I don't know who monitors those, but there's more than a few.
Yeah.
Of course, we all know how hazardous it is driving through this town at night anyway, so.
Yeah, I will talk with my cohorts in Public Works and try to help, help them identify which ones need to be corrected, at least so that they're functional.
Thank you. Perhaps a related issue at some point would be light pollution and addressing that.
That was one thing I was quite surprised that Lincoln City hadn't addressed was the requirement for downward directional lighting. I noticed in your signed ordinance, even the draft that's being proposed, that you allow lights to shine up at signs that aren't illuminated. That is a regulation that we've had for 20-something years in my former employment. And it's really helpful, I mean, it's beautiful, the amount of stars you can see here. It's nothing, you know, I see a million more than what I saw in South Peugean Town by far. But there's an opportunity for us to preserve that as well.
Kate, isn't there, in the residential code, downward lighting provisions?
In general, the code says that light shouldn't be casting glare onto other people's property or out into the streets. And then in our commercial design standards, we have some requirements for lighting. And, and so light fixtures or light poles in new parking lots and on commercial buildings are supposed to have full cutoff fixtures so that they don't have the light spilling out. But Lindsay's right, in our sign code, it does allow light to be directed up to a sign. So it's kind of the opposite.
All right, that's a good one. I like that one. Anyone else have additional ideas for goals that we want to tackle this year?
I think we might want to review, if we have time, the PUD ordinance to see if there are any changes we may want to make to that based on our experience with PUDs.
I think that there's a lot of opportunity for the PUD ordinance to increase some incentives for how people choosing to provide housing affordability. Maybe there's an opportunity for a density bonus. Maybe there's open space preservation that, you know, if you exceed what's required, or maybe you buffer from a wetland further than what the state requires, you can receive a density bonus or a clustering bonus in a different part of the site. But I do think that there's a lot of opportunities for improvements to increase incentives as well as increase some of the native features of the sites.
And I think that would, that would go a considerable distance with some of the developers who have been concerned about fees and ways to cut back on the fees so that they can build workforce and affordable housing. So if we can incentivize some of the behavior and, and encourage that development, provide them with an ability to do it at a lower cost, we might get, get at some of Gary's points as well. I, I have just a, a couple of things. I, I, you know, there are certain topics that keep bubbling up over and over and over. And, and when you dig down into the root of the issue, it seems to land in one spot, and that's enforcement. We seem to have some challenges in this city in enforcing the ordinances that we already have on the books. And so I, you know, I hesitate as we move forward and develop more ordinances without a better understanding of, of our enforcement capabilities and perhaps the challenges that our enforcement officer has. So at some point, it might be valuable for us to have the enforcement person or persons come in and, and just have a little chat. And it doesn't have to be in a formal meeting like this. It could be at a work-study format. But I'd, I'd really like to understand what their challenges are and why we seem to have such an inconsistency in enforcement of regulations already on the books.
Well, I would like to let the commission know I have received my badge, so.
All right, so it's you.
It's pretty exciting. No, we do have a code enforcement officer that works out of the police department. And I will ask him to come for a work-study in regards to enforcement. It is something that is on my, on my task list as it was, you know, one of the very first things that I was brought aware of as we were doing the tour of the draft sign ordinance.
Okay.
And, and I recognize that does need to, and, you know, we put a lot of effort and work into the codes that we draft and develop that, we want to see that they're valued after, upon implementation as well.
Right, and I, you know, to, to drill down just on one particular issue, and that's the complaints that are heard far and wide regarding the enforcement of VRD rules. And I, I think it would be maybe helpful if we looked at perhaps tying enforcement of regulations on VRDs to the license itself so that there was an incentive for either the owners or the management companies to tighten up a little bit on their enforcement to reduce the conflicts that we seem to have on a chronic basis between residents and, and visitors, so.
Don't, doesn't the planning commission have a person that is just responsible for VRDs?
Yes, yes, we do.
The department has a staff member who, whose focus is on VRDs.
Does he relate to the police department's enforcement officer?
Well, he's been going out and doing the annual inspections right now to, for the renewal of licenses and provide them with the requirements and make sure that those rentals don't get the renewal until they've met the criteria for the VRD. The issue that I understand is that the enforcement really comes at a time when the VRD is occupied and the tenants are maybe disrespectful to the neighborhood or unaware that they're in a neighborhood per se. And so that is a, a situation where while the VRDs are licensed, they meet the standards to operate, how do we address the enforcement of our guests and making sure that they know that this is a community that they're in? And so that is something that I can talk with Mr. Fritz as well as our code enforcement officer and the city administration team on, on what, what direction do we need to go to address that? And I, I do think that, that may be longer than 2019, but it is a, a conversation that is worth getting into the weeds on.
Sure. Gary? I'm sorry.
I was, I was just going to mention, Miles, that the two don't have overlapping at all. The VRDs are strictly VRD person. And then the city code enforcement person is, works for the police department. They're two totally unrelated at this point in time. Operation coordination might be a good thing, but right now they're distinct entities that don't-
Correct. We have our VRD permit. He reviews all of the permits to make sure that the home has the requirements of the code, not necessarily the residents follow, you know, common sense rules.
So that falls under the police department then if they misbehave basically?
Correct.
They park overpark, they trash.
Right. Those types of things. Only one other thing I have, and then you guys all chime in again. I, we, we talked a little bit about bringing additional businesses to town. I have heard the, the pushback on manufacturing in town because of supply chain issues and the expense of bringing things into Lincoln City on 101. But I, I think if we sort of take a little more forward view and, and not necessarily think about businesses as producing a widget, but producing information, information technology, computer apps, phone apps, games, those types of things, then the only supply chain that's required into the city is the internet.
And housing.
Well, and housing. But, you know, to be quite honest, those jobs, there is a lot of housing available in this city for the people who do those types of jobs and their income level. So, you know, I think we have two separate things. We certainly have major issues with the hospitality industry and those workers. But I'm, I'm talking about companies that are developing computer applications that are currently trying to, to survive in Silicon Valley where the starter home or tear-down home price is over a million dollars. We certainly could provide housing for a company of a couple of dozen people if they wanted to relocate here. The limiting factor, I think, is the internet, the broadband and the ability for, for that to come in. So I'm, I'm hoping we can think about some planning decisions that might be necessary to encourage that internet development into the city so that we can draw that type of business as well.
The broadband is as far as Newport because of NOAA and all of their things. And I would think it would not be a hard job if it isn't already.
Well, that's what I want to know. That's what I want to know. Because, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to take a trip down to Silicon Valley and talk to companies about relocating, but I want to make sure that we can provide them with what they need. You know, we have lots of vacant storefronts along 101. And it's my understanding that, that whatever it is, I don't know the proper term for it, whether it's fiber optics, or it's broadband, or it's, you know, the magic of the internet. But apparently it's on 101, but getting it from 101 onto a storefront 50 feet away has some sort of issues. So I'd like to understand what those issues are and what, if there's anything that we can do as a planning commission to facilitate moving that forward.
I can speak to that a little bit since I'm working for one of those companies in the area. One issue that I know we should address in the codes is when there's a requirement for a new construction that's taking place, power is obligated to be there, phone is obligated to be there, but coax cable is not on your demand list. And it's so, every time that, my company will pay for construction to get to an address if we have enough head time and reasonable amount. We took care of all the connections and ran cables for the new development up at Cascade Head, which is, we call our plant, that's been sitting there and not generating any money for us, but we invested in it. And then as far as the service for the area, there are, I believe, three different types of fiber lines that run up and down Highway 101. One's owned by the telephone company, one's owned by WAVE, and then we own one. We are now able to deliver to a business. It can be on Highway 101, or it can be off the streets. We can deliver a gigabyte of information to an address. So the demand, we can meet the demand anybody wants to have. We provide service to the hospital. Hospitals never complained about our bandwidth. So it's there and accessible.
What company, just for my own information, are you with?
Well, I work for Charter Communication, which runs under the name of Spectrum. So, you know, I'm part of that group, so.
I heard you say "commercial." Am I missing something? You, you can do it to "commercial," but you don't do it to "residential"?
As far as the speed deliveries that are available?
Yes.
We have changed our process. We used to cap residential accounts to, you know, maybe a gigabyte of service a month. So if somebody was downloading 16 movies in a day, they would probably run out of a gigabyte service and we would turn off their account. But that's the old way of doing things. We now have built up our process, so we don't cap anybody as far as the amount of data they want to get.
Yeah, I wasn't talking that as much as the speed, the speed to the residential houses.
I think residential is still limited to a hundred by 10. On the commercial side, we go up to a gigabyte. The hundred by 10 seems to suffice for everybody, so.
I would like better, but I, I moved-
I mean, to have a-
Okay, okay.
I moved from fiber optic to my house. I had fiber optic at my house in a previous location. And I'm just wondering why, is that a, on, well, is it a regulation that we can do something about? I guess that's what I'm asking. Or is that a capacity issue for you guys?
I, I think the regulation that we need to look at is the one that we should be included in that list of utilities that provide services to all addresses here in, in the city.
Okay.
And that should be a sign-off process, so, part of the checklist before they get their occupancy.
A question that rose in my head as you were speaking, Mr. Bryson, was, oh, it just sunk back down. The, oh, like a home occupation. If someone, if someone wanted to work out of their home doing internet activities, would, if they had a business license, would your company then consider that commercial and give them the one?
The gigabyte?
The gigabyte, yeah.
Uh, yeah, and, and it's pretty common, and I, we have a lot of those accounts set up. One of the things we do for, let's say you run a, a concrete business out of your home. A lot of times people will need static IP addresses. Well, a residential customer cannot get a static IP address. They, basically, there's no reason they need one. Whereas a business, you know, if you're working from home and you have to log into your mainframe, then it's nice to have a static IP address. And we go through a process where we change the designation on our side-
Okay.
-from a residential property to a commercial property.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions? Steve?
Other issues? Do we need ordinances to address tiny homes anymore? Work on that this coming year? Work on that this coming year?
Was there discussion that there would be more work on tiny homes beyond what the ordinance that was moved forward?
No, I think we now allow kind of everything.
I'm not sure we nailed it all down yet. I think there might be more work, but the specific issues I'm not sure of.
Okay, I will follow up on that.
Well, it looks like we have a lot of stuff to do.
Were there any questions about the list I had under housekeeping amendments?
You had a, near the bottom, second from last, accessory uses for places of worship. What was that?
So, yeah, so there's a few things that's in relation to. If you have a food service, maybe it's a food bank or a redistribution of food that your, your church provides. There's the overnight sheltering, as well as the parking lot allowances that we currently allow for them to have up to five cars stay in their parking lot if they provide the necessary restrooms and washing, that kind of stuff. And then schools. We've ran across an issue with a church desiring to put in a school, but our definition of school requires an outdoor playground. And so that's kind of been a, while the state allows indoor playgrounds now for the exercise component needed for educational purposes. So it's tackling, trying to address the, you know, kind of warming, warm.
Warming shelter.
Yeah, but it's not the warming shelter, but the church being able to provide that type of service for a limited number of people on a limited amount of nights during the seasons that are needed, as well as some of those other issues.
Why would we want to limit the number of nights?
Well, I don't know that we would want to limit the number of nights because of the weather, but we'd want to create some kind of, we'd need to have some kind of buffer so that they don't convert from a church to, say, an emergency shelter. So there needs to have some kind of conditions because they would be accessory to the place of worship.
And what would be the problem if they decided to be a full-time homeless shelter? I mean, if there's a need for somebody to be there?
Then we would want to permit that through as a shelter and not get a permit as a church and then have it be used as a shelter. So it's a matter of meeting the definitions and ensuring.
I just have a hard time putting a limit on help.
And I understand that. So it'll be a good conversation that we.
That's the same conversation, though, that VRDs in residential areas are, because churches are located in residential areas and they're allowed to be there as a commercial entity in a residential area because they're not a business. But if you turn them into an all-time shelter, you've got the exact same problems that the people have with having VRDs in their neighborhood. It's the exact same issue.
To piggyback on what you just said, it also gets back to the enforcement issue because I know in our area, we have so many of them that are under 30-day, under the 30-day rule. And yet those same homes have people there a whole lot more than 30 days a month, you know, for the 30 days.
Okay. You're referring to the VRD 30-day rule?
Yeah, the 30-day rule. And there are homes that are used a lot more than the 30 days. But again, that gets back to the enforcement.
Yeah.
And who's going to monitor it?
Yeah.
I'll meet you up in the parking lot later.
Okay. Hey, 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 no, no, no. Steve?
Yeah. Could you explain the lodges, club use, and Nelskot Business District issue?
Yeah, Kate actually brought that to my attention. Is it the Elks?
It's the Eagles.
The Eagles Lodge is in the Nelskot Business District. However, when we developed the Nelskot Plan, we didn't identify lodges as an allowed use. And so they're now an unconform, you know, a non-conforming use. So we want to correct that issue.
So it'd be an allowed use then?
It would, yeah, it would correct an error on our part.
And likewise, what is the reorganization requirements for distance slash separation about?
Yeah, so within the municipal code, there are about three or four different places that the yard separation distance is identified. And I think that the regulation actually sits within a definition instead of within the accurate code. But I'm looking at Kate for.
It's all over the place. I'll give you an example. If you have a lot with a house on it and you want to have a storage building, you need to be 10 feet, they need to be 10 feet away from each other. Okay, so that's one separation. If you have an accessory structure like that storage shed and a garage, which is also an accessory structure, they only need to be five feet away from each other. If you have more than one house on a lot, they have to be 15 feet away from each other. And all those numbers are fine, they're just in different parts of the code.
Okay.
So you have to hunt around for them. Yeah, I don't think we're suggesting they should be different numbers. It's just organizing them better.
I want to.
And then Kate, too, if you have a dog kennel that's 15 by 20, you can put that right up on the fence line.
Not really. You shouldn't, because that's an accessory structure that should be at least three feet away from the property line. That's another, that's a setback for an accessory structure. You can't, yeah, you can't put it right up to the property line.
But if it was a fence, it could be on the property.
If it's a fence, yeah, if it's a fence. But if it's a structure, like a chicken coop, for example, or a dog run, for example.
Then you can have it right on the property line.
You shouldn't, because if it's a structure of its own, if, a fence is a fence, but if it becomes something else, if it becomes an accessory structure like a chicken coop or a dog kennel, it should not be right up to the property line. I'm not saying they don't exist, they probably do, but they shouldn't.
They do.
A four-sided fence. Any other, any other questions about this list?
I do.
Comments? Yes, Sean?
On the accessory dwelling units, it says remove the requirement for owner to reside full-time.
Yeah. That's been considered as part of a housekeeping pack, or a package to address affordability. If we, many people that own, say, their second home in Lincoln City come in and ask to develop an ADU, we say, okay, well, do you reside at the home 100% of the time? And they're like, no, it's my second home. Sorry, you can't have an ADU. And so being allowed, being able to have both structures as a long-term rental would help decrease our affordability and add housing stock per se.
I think I hear a sigh there. That probably means the fear of it becoming a VRD or a short-term Airbnb.
Well, I think that we would want to make sure that we put in there that the accessory dwelling unit would not be able to be used as a VRD, because then it ultimately removes the additional housing stock we're aiming to gain.
So right now, for an accessory dwelling unit, neither the ADU or the main house can be VRDs. So that is a current prohibition. But as Lindsay brought up, you have the situation where the homeowner might be here half the time, but it isn't their primary principal residence, so they don't even qualify. But then there's the other issue of, is it really that, is it, is it a big problem if you had a main house and an ADU and both of them were long-term rentals? Maybe it is, or maybe it isn't, but that might be something to discuss. Because maybe it would be fine for both of them to be rent, long-term rentals, not short-term.
Like living in an apartment.
Like two houses on a lot where people live there full-time.
Yeah, or duplex. People live like that.
Okay. Doug has the floor.
Oh, I just, somebody talked to me this week about something they were kind of upset about. And it had to do with a storage building that they had outside on their property. And they wanted to put up a gutter and have the water transfer into a rain bucket. And they were told that they would have to have a permit to have a gutter put on the building so they could run water into a rain bucket. But if they just let the water run off the roof, they didn't need it. And they were kind of going, knocking their head. And I didn't know if, if that's something that we need to address in our ordinances.
I don't believe the planning department addresses water diversion. And I, but I think that maybe, would gutters require a building permit?
I don't think they do. I wouldn't want to say that 100%, but I don't think they do.
I think that's more of a water diversion issue than a gutter, putting gutters on a structure. Containment of water is a public resource. I'm not well-versed yet in Oregon's state law on water resource rights and laws. But it may be an issue that was discussed through the Public Works Department. And I can follow up on that.
I'd be curious, but, and also if, when we have gutters that do collect water, it just gets directed to the street. And there's a lot of places where that water, when it's directed to the street, floods another neighbor's property. And that doesn't seem to be effective. And I can cite multiple properties that that happens at.
My assumption is those would be older, developed lots that may have occurred prior to 10 years ago?
These are instructions 2010.
Okay. Well, I'll look in, I'll look into that. I'm not sure what the, Washington State stormwater regulations are very strict, so I haven't, I'm surprised you see my eyebrows go up with your comments and, really? But I will look into that a little further and let you, email you and let you know what I found out.
Okay. And then I heard another one, too.
Okay, keep going.
Since we're here. So this, this little scenario dealt with somebody that had an outside building, they had a permit for the building, the building was constructed, and they ran power from their house out to the building. And they did it properly, they buried it 24 inches. And a neighbor, I believe, turned them in and said that they didn't have an electrical permit for the outside building. Well, subsequently, it was discovered, according to the ordinances, that you don't have to have electrical, what's the word I want here? You don't have to have an electrical permit if you have a generator that runs your electrical features in a, in a outbuilding. It's considered off the grid. And therefore, since it's off the grid, you don't have to have a permit.
But did you say that they ran it from their home?
Well, they, it was, they were made to take it out. But in going over the codes, they discovered that if you're off the grid, you don't have to have a permit.
Yeah, so the county processes all the electrical permits and plumbing permits within the, within Lincoln City? So I am not sure about that one. Kate, do you have any insight on?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't, I'm sorry.
So the "they" would be the county?
You would, you would want to contact Lincoln County to ask about that.
I'm just throwing it out there for conversation because it just struck me as. Now, that was a question, is the "they" you use, are you referring to the county? Is the "they" the county that had them take it out? Yes. Okay.
Interesting.
So they put a generator in? The owners put a generator in instead of the hardline?
I don't think they finalized their decision yet, but they're, I think, I'm pretty sure they're considering that because it's not used that often. And then you get into the other effect, well, is it going to be a noise variance? It can get a little ridiculous in some of these things, but.
So I think we have lots, as I said, lots of things to work on this year, and I'm, I'm excited to tackle some of these things. I think it's going to be good. Any planning commission training tonight?
No.
No, okay. Reports and comments from any of the commissioners? And I'm actually going to request one from either Steve or Sean. You're working with tiny house people?
What happened?
To bring, bring a demo here?
Steve was asked to do something and then pawned it off on me.
No, I didn't.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, Diana, Hinton asked if Steve and maybe I could help get a touch with these people and see if we can get the balls rolling on it to see if we can get a display tiny house to be at a community center for community days in mid-April. And they are totally on board to do so. I just need to get the two right people to talk to each other and, and that, just, it should happen. They seem eager to do so. They already have one that they've, somebody lives in here in town, near the, near the mall, and apparently she loves it. I don't, we don't currently allow them to be on a trailer here in the city, but it is just so that people can get a feel of what it's like to be inside that space. They do build them site-ready so that anything that you want.
I think it will be a very popular exhibit.
I think it will. I think it will. They're going to try to have it here for the entire length of the event, is what I am understanding, so.
Great.
Yeah.
I know a tiny home builder in Gay Harbor, and I sent her the ordinance that got passed, too, because it's just an ongoing battle in Puget Sound, so I was excited. It's like, look at what they're doing.
Yeah. All right. I'm excited to see it. Okay, any other comments or reports from commissioners? Kate, anything from you?
Is there any word on if there's a final meeting for the design standards, or are we waiting for their final report?
We are a little behind on the project scheduling with the loss of debt, the hire of me, and the transition and priorities of the Village Master Plan. So I've got a meeting scheduled with MIG teleconference either later this week or early next week and should be able to provide some more clarity on the process on that. But there will definitely be some more meetings in front of you guys on that.
I'm pretty sure they were going to have some codes, revised codes for us, and some of that is going to pertain to the signage.
Yep.
So I'm hoping that city council will wait for that, too, to see what their recommendations are for codes.
Yeah, well, with the delay in the process, I think that it actually opens the door for us to address that signage issue.
Great. Okay. Future agenda items and next meeting?
Yeah, we're going to have a conditional use permit in front of you for kenneling at the.
Ocean Lake Veterinary Clinic.
Yeah.
Their new location.
Their new location, correct. And so that'll be on the 19th. And if there's anything else that, if you guys wanted, I'm trying to think of when the agenda would be due, I could look at trying to set aside 30 or 40 minutes for work studying on the comp plan, too, if you'd like.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
With regard to that public hearing that we're going to have on the kenneling, I know the map was sent out to all of us and everybody else, I guess, in town or nearby. Is it possible for us to also get a, like a Google map of it so we can see? I know, you know, when I look at the site plan, there are lots of little lots to the west of the site, but it's not clear to me what's on those lots.
Yes.
So it would be nice to know.
We can actually set that up for the meeting so that we can have that discussion if we need to, interactively.
That would be great.
Yeah, because we need common information, not specific.
Exactly. And that's why I was asking for it to be sent to all of us in advance, so none of us get in trouble with the attorney police.
I think that was something that you'd mentioned before, that we typically, this is more for Lindsay's benefit, during a PowerPoint presentation, would have the zoning map and the aerial maps and everything during the PowerPoint. But I think that Patty had asked, we just haven't had a lot of public hearings lately.
Right.
But you had asked if possible to have in the staff report or as an exhibit to the staff report, maybe an aerial map to show the site.
Right.
So that you can see it before the actual hearing.
A larger scale that shows the neighborhood?
Yeah.
I think the conditional use is what, 250 feet? Is that what, the circumference?
Yes.
So kind of that general area, I guess?
Perfect. Okay. Anything else from anyone for the good of the order? All right. We're done.
Good job.
Are we still online? Are we still on mic?
Yes.
Careful.
Okay.